And there it is, ready to go.
Okay. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is Wednesday, July 24th. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30. We are in the Enfield DPW Conference Room and also we are on the Teams Video Conference. Members present from my left.
Linda Jones.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Eric Carhartz, alternates.
Bill Griffin, alternate.
Up to your staff.
Whitney Banker, staff and alternate.
Okay. You know if John is coming?
I don't think so. I put his name in hopes that he was.
He's got a seat.
Eric's tag is underneath him either.
Yeah, we, we can't elevate anybody to John's seat because he is the ex officio Select Board Member and he cannot be replaced by a common person.
Sorry about that.
Bill, Bill can sit in his chair.
Bill, if you'd like to take your name tag and come over on your side of the table, let's find.
It's a better spot for you.
Uh, let's see, a couple of announcements. Despite what the fortune tellers and soothsayers have put in the town newsletter, we are, we are going to have republic hearings tonight. We will listen to the presentations, apply the appropriate regulations, and we will reach a decision. So those of you who thought maybe it had been decided beforehand, we don't work that way. Next on the order of business, we'll take public comments on anything that is not on the agenda. Anybody here have any comments that do not involve agenda items? Okay. Hearing none. Next, we're going to take the first hour and we're going to listen to the final check-in from our consultants on the HOP grant. The reason we are doing this today and taking them first before the hearings is because today is our last meeting in July and we have to get this grant wrapped up by the end of July and get the final bill and deliverables, reports, what have you, into the granting organization by July 30. So without further ado, I am going to turn the meeting over to Steve Whitman. And what Steve run through of what he has for us?
All right. Thank you, David. Basically, as David just explained, we wanted to meet once more. We had sent you a couple of updated items. We wanted to walk through those and just take any feedback and edits that you may have that you know of. And then after tonight's conversation, we will make any edits, package all the materials. So you have editable versions as well as PDFs of everything, map files, Word documents, InDesign files for the fact sheets, all that stuff. The idea being that Mark and I want to give you as a solid and as complete a packet as possible and as close to what you'd like by the end of July so that Rob can successfully submit it all and be able to check that box in case you decide to apply for future funding in the future. So and Rob, to that point, as we send you everything, we'll put it all in the Dropbox folder and I'll coordinate that with you after tonight. If you need any assistance in reporting, just let me know. So if you want to go over what is your reporting or if you want to check in on anything we did early on the process and our memories are foggy, we can double check. So basically what we checked in with David about today was kind of going in this reverse order and first talking about the fact sheets because the fact sheets were, they're the newest thing that was sent along. I don't know if they were just printed for tonight and people have had a chance to see them prior or are they seeing them for the first time?
Did they need one?
No, no.
Everybody in the audience.
The basic idea was to have one packet. These can be edited. So if you were to make changes, we'd want to make sure we edit them. I found one error already and that's my fault. I will own it. I will fix it. And what it is, is in the second residential unit fact sheet, we talk about the change that's proposed and I was using an old version and referred to a conditional use permit. And you'll see in the zoning language, we talked to have, talked about having a second residential unit by right in the R5. So I need to fix that boo boo. And I wanted to point it out in case anyone else saw it.
Hey, great summary.
I, I'd like to let him get through his presentation first. If you, if you do have edits, we'll go over them. When he's done.
I mean, I'm happy to just take them unless you want to project it because everyone has paper copy, David. If you have comments from Tim and others, I'd rather just get the edits now.
All right.
Yeah, if that's all right.
Well, I, I think this is going to cause a considerable amount of confusion. Way this is written. This is not the proposed zoning amendments.
Correct.
This is a recommendation from resilience to the, to the planning board for for zoning amendments. And I think that's what this should say. When we get to the point of actually having the zoning amendments written, then we can use this as a good template to spell out what we eventually decide on. But right now, if we just handed out three or four copies to the public, this is going to get spooked all over town in a heartbeat. And this is not what we're proposing.
All right, Tim. Tim, that wasn't the intent. So if you may remember from last meeting, we talked about providing you with fact sheets that you could use prior to going to town meeting as a summary for those that don't want to read the actual amendments. So these are not intended to be shared now. This is because we have to wrap up this month and we're trying to give you things you can use next winter, next spring, or else in the future.
I, I appreciate that. I, I'm not, I'm not aggravated about this. I'm just pointing out that we need to get this document changed immediately to a recommendation, a draft. Draft needs to be all over this.
Sure.
We haven't agreed really on any of this.
This is his presentation to us. And there's no language in here that actually is written as an ordinance.
Town of Enfield, New Hampshire, propose zone.
Yeah, I get, I get that, Tim. And he's going to change it. Okay?
As long as we're agreed on.
We are agreed.
It's, yeah, I admit we can do that. We just didn't another community, if it helps, is we can put voter guide at the top as well. And this, you're going to have an editable file. So to your point, Tim, some of these standards might change and you would need to edit, but also you can change the language. We just didn't want you to have to start from scratch. We're trying to give you a step up.
I mean, the purpose, the purpose of this outline is, is it's a preliminary outline handout that's coming from the planning board that we're giving you. So obviously it's, it's out of context. But it's to be used by you for the, for the sheets that you come to a consensus on. I mean, these are all ideas that we've been talking about over the last six months. After today, it's up to you and the voters decide where you want to go with these ideas. So it is, I agree with Tim's comment. It's a little out of context because at this point you're not proposing anything.
Right.
But it's what this, the purpose of this document was is an advocacy tool for the board to use in the future at some point. I mean, we can certainly put draft on it and stuff, but this is supposed to be coming from you, not from us. Obviously, these are ideas through a process that we had with, with you and the public, but so that was the intent. And you know, the intent wasn't to say, oh, you know, you voted on this and, and this is ready to go to ballot, you know, in the fall, in the spring. So.
Do others have comments?
Second one. Somehow we've managed to miss completely the fact that we're creating, suggesting that we create a completely new district called the village, the Enfield Village. No section at all on that. That in fact was in our last couple of meetings, I think we were leaning towards that being our main focus going forward with any proposed amendments. What does it mean in the village district? What sort of things are we talking about? Perhaps being changed in the land use regulations from the R1 district where the village now is.
So Tim, that's page two, the mixed use district.
Well, it's not page two. The mixed use district is talking about the community business district and Route 4. The rest of the village is not the mixed use district.
So if you looked at the mixed use district edits that we sent along on June 28th, we had a meeting with Rob after last, the last meeting and one of his recommendations to resolve any confusion over the change of Enfield Village and Route 4 to one combined district was that we call it the mixed use district. And so this is just a summary sheet about that. If we want to describe it differently, let us know what language you'd like changed or we'll provide the file and you can change it. Clearly you're not ready to move forward with this stuff at, at a meeting soon. Anyway, you have more time that you're going to be working on these and deciding what's appropriate for Enfield. But this was our attempt to summarize that. Did I miss anything on that, Rob, as far as talking about the village and Route 4 together?
Yeah, I, I think one of my hangups was calling it the village district when we wanted to allow mixed use in that, that zone. The, to me, when you say village, to me, it suggests residential. So you and I have talked about this as well.
Yeah, I mean, my, my thought is we have a village mixed use and a village residential. But you know, that's an internal debate that the planning board can have.
We, we certainly need to explain it to the public.
Absolutely.
Right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And carefully describe what it's currently called, what we are proposing it's called, the changes in boundary and what each is.
And we know that those are things that we need.
And we all know it. We just need to put it in.
Yeah. And you know, we can, we can build off of these templates once we have, once we've made up our minds.
Right.
What you just described, a village district residential and the mixed use area, this, this, that, that is what we've been talking about.
Right, right.
So this mixed, mixed use district is not the village residential.
It's not. It's the mixed use or village mixed use or, well, you know, well, I don't want to have this debate right now because we have people who are here to explain what they have given us. We know that the whole conversation on village mixed use, we still have a lot to decide. So let's continue on what they are giving us because their time is limited.
Yeah, I, I think, I think having resilience edit this document on the fly tonight is probably not worth it. It's probably not worth the talk going in that direction. I think it makes more sense for us to take the files that they're going to provide and we can edit it as a group. But let's, let them spend the time going over it. And then we will, of course, edit it because we all have changes already, right?
We probably do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fair, Brad. I mean, we're happy to hear if there are other thoughts and any simple changes we're happy to make. But I think you're right. Unfortunately, this kind of artificial deadline of the end of July kind of creates this, it's like a pressure, unusual pressure on this project where you feel forced to make decisions you don't need to make yet.
Yeah, I, I think that instead of trying to tell you what our edits are, I think that we should take this time and ask them questions of something that we might not understand.
Please. Yeah.
Because of July 30.
Remember, everything, everything in these documents is amendable, changeable and can be edited any way you end up going. So nothing's written in stone here.
So other questions on the fact sheets? If not, we can move to the next item.
Um, well, I'm a document. I just have a question on the second residential unit. It's internally, we, I had concerns about regarding that. And I kept being told that the second unit would only be owned by the, the first owner. Basically both units, both structures would end, end the land with the own by, under one ownership. And in your fact sheet, you state that the second unit, at least the structure, could be owned by a third party. Unrelated.
Yep. That's what we've been talking about the last couple of meetings, but that's another decision you could change your minds on.
Okay, but there's no, there's no law restricting that the second unit is, has to be owned by the landowner.
No, I mean, picture like a condo.
Right, right. And yeah, I was just being, I kept being told that, no, that's not the case. That it would be owned by the, everybody, all the, all the property would be under one ownership. And legally, that's not required, requirements.
It's not in the RSO.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We had certain wording to that effect in the ADU amendments last year.
Yeah, but this was for us full stock, full house.
I understand. But I think for the same reasoning, we probably ought to strike that section of the ADU too. But in any event.
Or, or maybe they're different.
Maybe they're different.
Maybe we have different language for each home.
Yeah, I think the goals of the, of those two are different. The goal of an ADU is different than a goal of having a separate, single family home on the property.
You know, if another family owns the second second house, do they own the land under it?
No, that's, that's according to what I'm hearing is no.
Is no.
They don't have, they don't have to, right?
Right.
If it's, if they own the land under it, it's a subdivision.
Exactly.
Right. Steve and Mark, are there examples of that kind of reg in other towns and state? I haven't come across one quite like what you've suggested in the R5. And I think it's going to be so limited in its application because it can't be subdivisible. Like you have some of these other caveats, but Mark, have you seen it?
No, I know, I, I don't. And I guess you could, you know, you sort of plow on the road here, which is, which is actually good. Something wrong with that, but you can sort of make up how you want to deal with it. You know, moving forward. I mean, you could require that it remain under one ownership. Or you could allow it to be subdivided, which case that create a condominium, which has to come to you anyway. So that whoever owns that second lot owns the lot and the land under it. But that would have to be through a condominium. So there's different ways on, you know, whatever you're going to be comfortable. If you decide you want to pursue this amendment on how the mechanics works.
So you're not necessarily recommending the language about the second lot or the second building not having to be the same.
No, we didn't get into that detail, Tim. I think it's, you know, that's something that I think the board should discuss and come to an agreement on how you want to deal with that.
So this is not, this sentence that
the second unit may be held under different ownership?
Well, it says this would be an alternative to an ADU in the R5 as it can be owned by a different person. Et cetera.
Yeah, I mean.
Is that, is that your recommendation?
I think it's a possibility because that's what we've been hearing from the people that have contacted Rob. You know, if there's a homeowner whose parent or child wants to build a house, that parent, the homeowner may not want to own that home or be able to financially build that home. So I think getting into ownership might be a mistake. I think you let it, let them figure out they can use a condominium arrangement. They can use whatever they want. They have to come to you and show that it could work. And as Mark said, you're charting new territory. So you want to, you want to put this out there and see how it goes. And if you need to make changes over time, you can. But it seems like there's an interest for this in the R5.
I mean, we had an application in Famas last week, last week in Greenland. Where, and Greenland doesn't have this provision, but they have a backlot provision. So the family subdivided out a backlot and the parents are actually going to build on that separate lot with their home, smaller, and then the sons moving into the bigger house out front. But if we, if Greenland had this provision, I'm almost positive they would just, you know, plop the house out back and done it that way. So it's really, I guess what, what the board and the community is comfortable with and how much you want to get into the weeds or let it, let that family decide how to deal with it.
Yeah, it can happen organically when somebody decides to do it.
Yeah, and I don't think you're not going to be able to get any financing unless you own the land as well as, you know, it's a I realize some, some owners may not need financing. They'll just pay cash and have something built. But I think there's probably a lot of complications here that would be unnecessarily introduced if this sentence was left in here.
I agree, but for another time, we can take it out.
Well, but, I mean, I, I guess I'm still confused about what this is. I thought this was the recommendation from resilience as to what we should consider doing.
The recommend, the recommendation of amendments is in your packet. It's a totally different document. This is a recommendation for when you're ready, how do you tell people quickly what you've proposed for each of these items? Is this something that's been used successfully in other communities? Because people don't want to read zoning amendments. They want to be told, what is this? Why is it important? And what will change?
Yeah, that I get. I, I get. And thank you for that. This is, this is a nice looking, to the point, well laid out. No question it will serve that purpose well. I just, I'm just confused that information that in here, that's in here is not necessarily your recommendation.
But I think it is a summary of what they heard from us over the past several weeks. This is a summary of what they heard from us over the past several weeks. And then the detail are, is in their other packet.
Where's their other packet?
And I would add not only from us, but from the public input. Right, the surveys.
Right. And there'll be more of that as well.
Yes, mine.
Right, the big back.
It was like two minutes ago, two minutes ago. I'm assuming that's fine soon.
I mean, the discussions we've had to date have been, you know, we did get into some specifics, but we didn't get into the weeds. And that's why this language is in here and it says the second unit may be held. You know, it's, it's, we didn't get into drafting exact language and then have a debate about it and then amend it and then you take a vote on it. So I mean, again, it's, it's meant as, as a starting point for discussion. And I think the board needs to look at each one of these ideas and flush them out and come to a consensus if it's something you want to pursue.
And that doesn't have to be by spring 2025. You could take whatever amount of time you want to work through these and get them where you want them. Anything else on the fact sheets? I want to be sensitive to your timetable, David.
Okay.
Kurt? I have a question on the conditional use permit criteria. On the second page, mixed use districts B, so 2.0. There's the first sentence, within the mixed use district, dimensional requirements for residential density may be increased. I don't fully understand what's what, what does that mean?
You want to explain it, Mark? Or do you want me to tell them where to look in the mixed use district?
Yeah, in the district itself right now, I'm just going to that section.
It's page one of the mixed use 401 draft. It was formerly Enfield Village. It struck out at the top.
Right. Okay. So right now, we're noting 12 units per acre as a base density in the mixed use area. And you know, again, there were some discussions about, you know, do we want to allow additional density? Want if a project comes in that, that makes sense. So we came up with this criteria under the CUP to allow someone to come in with a proposal that would exceed 12 units per acre. And that would come to the planning board under a condition use permit with the noted five provisions that are outlined here to allow an applicant to have more than 12 units per acre. If the board felt that those conditions or, or conditions that are noted aren't met, you could deny the CUP, but it would be entirely within the planning board, not the zoning board, and it would be your decision.
Yeah.
These, just. Yep, go ahead.
Just clarifying. My, my confusion was that when it states dimensional requirements, I think of physical and footage size with length heights, but then you get it, but then there's density, which I, I also understand density is just more units per X. So it was the two different measurements that were confusing me in the same sentence.
It's, it's in the, in the mixed use district outline, we have density under dimensional.
Okay. I didn't, I guess I didn't cross reference it then.
Yeah. So that's why I referenced it that way.
Okay.
That's a place too, Kurt, where you could potentially strike dimensional requirements, just focus on the residential density to clarify. That would make sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've seen it under dimensional.
It's your, those are your options for increased density. Or you go small apartments. I mean, those are your three options, right?
Yeah.
So.
So you're dealing with the setback sides.
Yeah, which means it's wider.
Right.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So you either go out or up or, or smaller inside.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So the, the mixed use district conditional use permit criteria that Kurt took us to on page two, that's new since last month. So we talked about a need for it. We showed you the triplex on the first page, the triplex conditional use permit criteria for the R3 and R5, but we had not shown you this. So I'm glad some of you got a chance to take a look at it. The idea here too was to allow for some flexibility with the front and inside setbacks and with height as needed, like we talked about last month, but it would have to, as Mark said, come before the planning board, be able to satisfy the criteria, be able to get a conditional use permit.
And these criteria, obviously you can add to them, you can delete them. They're sort of a starting point for a discussion and you can make them your own. We just tried to garner some, you know, some typical issues that you wanted to consider with this type of of thing that's, or application that comes before you. So obviously going through those and coming to a consensus is the same as with any amendment amongst yourselves.
Any other questions about conditional use permits? All right. Do you want to move on to the actual zoning amendment? The kind of track change version we've been working on? And I'll just point out a few things that have changed since last month.
You make a copy of those, Rob, what do you think?
I did not. You guys need copies of that?
I can look online.
Unless Steve, do you want to project it?
I can try to do that. Let's see here. Hold on one sec. Hold on one sec. Let me see if I have it. I don't even think I have it pulled up, that one pulled up. I have the new stuff pulled up. All right. Someone tell a joke while I do this. Buy me some time, Mark. The biggest change would be the change in the name, which is up for your discussion and. And determination eventually. Um. And I'm almost there. Okay. Share screen. All right, can you see that?
Make it bigger.
I'm gonna, I just wanna make sure you can see it first.
Yeah. Yeah, that's yeah.
Let me scroll up. All right, so the biggest change, um, it was in the previous version in the June meeting, we had it labeled as Rob. And I were talking about a few minutes ago as Enfield Village District. Um, so Enfield, Enfield Village District was struck out. Mixed use district was put in with. This comment that we added when we sent it out on the twenty-eighth. Um. The other thing here was we removed the phrase workforce housing. We had a discussion about that. Um. This is really interesting when it shares through teams, it's making some odd spelling errors in the comments. But we talked about removing the workforce housing phrase because it. Um, potentially applies to any of the residential structures, um, by. Ownership type and. It was determined just to simplify. So that was the recommendation. The other thing on the first page of this. Was what we were just talking with Kurt about, the twelve units per acre. Um. There was some discussion from some of you about maybe even removing the limit, and that's what led us to talk about, well, what if you keep the limit? So it's not wide open, it doesn't. Stop you from getting this adopted, um, but that you have the conditionally use permit if you wanna go higher, and if somebody can show that it could work. So that was just a recommendation to hopefully get you. To approval. Um, I'll pause on those three initially to see if there are any questions or feedback.
So where, where are we? Um. We're talking about the mixed use district.
Correct.
Or whatever we end up calling.
Yeah.
Um. Does the mixed use district include, say, May and Maple Street, Stephen, Union Street? That's what.
That's for you all to determine. We showed a map last month, which is here. Where we circled that and asked that question, and we haven't received any edits. So you can edit this if you decide you wanna take those out.
Yeah, I think to David's idea, last meeting, we probably have two. Uh, residential. Village district, whatever we're calling it, and then the mixed use.
Yeah, I mean, this is something that we have to hash out.
To decide. We, we certainly get feedback about the May and Maple.
Yeah. And that is not gonna be a mixed use district.
Right, right.
Period.
And I think waiting to redraw this map is absolutely fine. Um, we're gonna provide you with the GIS files. So you can make edits and you can add, make it village residential if that's your current thinking. Um. So yeah, it would be kind of the core of the village and the Route Four district, I would think at a minimum. Would be the mixed use district.
Yeah. Well, the wording. The wording suggests that it follows the boundaries, the existing community business and Route Four. Commercial district, correct?
Currently, yes.
Yeah, we can change that.
Yeah.
Once we decide what it is that we want. Yeah, we don't need to. Really get into the weeds on that. At this meeting.
Um, one change we were gonna see, well, Mark suggested, and I think makes sense. Uh. We were trying to get away from special exceptions in the mixed use district, and we put wireless towers as a conditional use. Uh, Mark made a recommendation that it probably should go back to being a special exception. So we're gonna edit this and make a note, and we'll explain why. Um. Just to flag that for you. Do you wanna add anything else on that, Mark, as far as wireless towers go?
Um. No, I think, you know, with our focus on, on housing, you know, we want to try to stay in the lane and. Um. I mean, the federal law around. Wireless towers has changed significantly over the last ten years, so, um. It's probably best just to keep it with the ZBA. Obviously, the, the planning board can. Make a change to that if they want in the future. Um. But, uh, it's, it's. At the end of the day, it's extremely difficult to deny, uh.
Unstoppable.
Yes.
Right. Other thoughts or questions? Those were the major changes. They were all within that proposed mixed use district. All right, I'm gonna see if I can, uh. Stop screen sharing. Did I successfully stop screen sharing?
Yes.
It would appear so. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's it. Then you have the map, you have the accessory dwelling unit draft that we showed in June, which nothing changed. That will remain draft language you can work with. We have the erosion and sediment, stormwater control standard examples we provided. Those will be there. Um. So you, you have more than enough stuff for any planning board. To work on and probably just how you decide to prioritize and bring them forward, either individually or as a package. Will be a big discussion for the board. But we wanted to give you as many materials, so you're not starting at zero, and that they're kind of. You're gonna have to look for these consistencies that we're talking about, depending on what you change, what you decide to do.
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. This was a fun project. It was just too bad it was a compressed timeline for all of you. It's a lot to expect of you.
Yeah, I. You know, I think we did well, given the fact that we didn't have. Enough time. And, uh, I thank you for. Putting up with us and pushing this thing as far as you could possibly take it, given. Given the artificial constraints.
Thank you.
Having a, a robust discussion on these things is healthy, um, because the voters are gonna ask similar questions, so. You know, looking at these things and different lights and different textures and is important, so, um. It was a little rushed, but, um. Again, I think this gives you a lot of, a, a strong starting point for, for in-depth discussion. And as Steve said earlier, you know, there's no mandate to adopt any of this this year. You can take your time, and when you think it's right and you've edited it all, you can start bringing it to the voters. I mean, it's no. Order, it's all depending on how you wanna deal with it.
Okay. So Steve, you and Rob and possibly I will get together and talk about the mechanics of the actual. Closeout.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll move through what we do know are edits that should be made or things that should be highlighted. We'll move through those in the coming days. And we'll be in touch next week so that you have it early in the week. Um, we'll package GIS files and in design files and all that. And then, um, probably provide it to you so you can see it, and then get on a call like this so we can look through it and make sure we're not missing anything.
Yeah. Um. For in design files, since I think I'm probably the only one on the board that has in design. Um, please send IDMLs rather than. Whatever version files you, you guys are on.
Okay, I will share that. Request with Liz, who will know what that means, cause I don't know what it means either.
She knows.
I'm sure, and if she's not sure, she'll check, she'll call you, so.
Okay, that's fair. All right, so, um, again, thank you, and, um, we'll be talking to you within the next few days.
Thanks very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, just one thing for the public. Yeah. Uh, the reason why it was compacted was our original contractor that we were gonna do the grant with. Moved to Australia three months into it. And said, we don't wanna do it anymore. Basically. So we got resilience.
And, and this was a grant from the state.
It was a grant that had to be done by July.
We wanted to make sure we used the money.
And we did not pay anything to the original contractor.
Right.
Can I make an additional comment to the public?
Sure.
Um. Your copy of. This. You got ones?
Tear it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Please don't start getting waiting for this.
Yeah.
Draft.
It's a jumping off point. Not a jumping in.
It's gonna be reworked. Based on future discussions that the board has. Um.
And public sessions.
And public sessions, absolutely.
Yeah.
And just to kind of reiterate what Steve said. These. He, but part of the scope of work was that he would prepare. Informational pieces that we could use when we're ready to bring this before the public.
Yeah.
And that's what. That's what these are, and he did. The best he could with the information that he had. And, you know, I, I think the title is probably.
Misleading.
A little bit misleading.
Yeah.
But, um. You know, he's gonna send us the files and we will. Fix it. And, you know, we don't know if we're gonna bring all of these. To the, to the town to vote on in March twenty twenty-five. Or one or two, there may be some additional things that we had. And we may bring nothing, and that's all to be determined, so. I, I want the public to be clear that. We are. We're still in a really early phase, we're in process. And Steve and Mark are trying to fulfill the terms of their contract as best they can. Given the time limitations, et cetera, et cetera. So. That having been said, um, we'll do some public hearings. And I think probably the, um.
Twenty-four seven oh two?
I was gonna go to twenty-four seven oh three. And then go to twenty-four seven oh two. That way we'll give Brian a little bit of a break between his two hearings. So, um. Brian Degman has applied for a voluntary lot merger for two parcels he owns. One at fifty-three West Scott Road and. One at twenty-nine West Scott Road. Two parcels are shown on tax map twenty-nine, lot funky dash one. And tax map thirty-five, lot twelve. Both parcels are owned by Brian P. Degman. Although. Are, are these under your name personally?
Yes. Yeah, and then once they're merged, I will. Uh, I'm playing on farming them, so I will incorporate my farm. It keeps me from having to go back to Indiana to go farming.
Just for the record, I am in a butter.
Oh, hi.
Hi. No, we actually have the same corner pin. That's our buddy. It's the corner pin.
Which one are you?
I'm thirteen, on Shaker Hill Road, so my corner pin is the corner pin for your seventeen.
Ah, I see, I see.
That's all it is, though, just a corner pin.
So, do you feel you can reach a decision?
I think I can. That's why I'm just saying, just for the record.
The biggest thing I'm looking for when somebody comes in for a, uh, voluntary merger. Is that the deeds match correctly. And, and that's something, the next one that we'll do.
Right.
Uh, that. She had to, uh, fill, take care of it.
Yes.
I did get copies from her this week, and they were in this packet of materials to see those, but. Confirmation on both of these voluntary lot mergers that. They have matching deed reference.
Yep.
So that's a, Brian, hang up of the registry. The registry will kick it back to us if you don't have the right.
Brian's are all set, do you mat?
Yep.
Yep.
Anything else you wanna say, Brian?
No, just, I hope your zoning doesn't make it so I can't have my hayfield.
How about cows? You can have some cows?
Uh, actually, I, I want three cows to eat. Stuff. Like, that's my long annoying plan.
Yeah, your grandfather didn't, he goes.
Try, go.
Establish.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I needed that. I was unable to se- secure a supply of hay for the winter. That's why I acquired the field. Next to it, so I could, uh, it's gonna be a couple of years. Because it's in a, kind of a sorry shape for as far as clover, but I'm kind of fond of red clover, and so the plan is to have, uh. Clover, and, um, I forget the name of the people who have bees. A lot across an apiary. On the other side, back there on the, one of the.
The caprins.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, I mentioned that to them and they were pleased.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Their bees work my garden too.
Yeah.
Better, better a hayfield than. A subdivision.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, board members, any questions or comments?
Um, Kurt? Comments more? Uh, this is the old Hus property, right? Where there was the stable.
Herman's, yeah, Herman Myers originally.
Yes.
Yeah. Some reason, I believe they got a ZBA variance. For all those bosses at one place. Cause it's in the R one.
Because it was commercial.
Uh, that was the issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that was a boarding school.
It was a special exception.
Right, a special exception, cause it was, it, they were boarding horses and doing us.
It's considered. Operation as a business.
Yeah.
Learning as a, okay.
Yep. That's actually important for insurance, so as far as insurance things, it's a. Anything would be a commercial operation, and the fact it has gone fast, has some agriculture, that is the past there.
Right.
Because, uh, it, interestingly, uh, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what you actually think of the voters, it matters what the insurance company thinks.
Exactly.
That's. How it goes. Yeah, so.
Having trouble reading this, cause it's on two different maps. Aren't both of them designed?
So, yeah, so, yeah, one is here and here. So there are two different tax maps, but if you look at the overlay.
It's on a boundary.
It's on a boundary between tax maps. So it's twelve on one tax map and twenty on one on the other.
Oh, but they are both right here.
Right, yeah, right next to each other.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nothing to be confused, looking at it last night.
No, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
The guy farm. Need more farms in this town.
I make a motion, we accept the merger as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? I opposed abstentions. The ayes have it. And Brian?
Thank you.
So you are merged.
You're free for about five minutes.
Okay. Next hearing. Is P twenty-four oh seven dash oh two. Allison Flint. Allison Melinda Flint Living Trust. Has applied for voluntary merger for two parcels that she owns. One at two fifty, um, I'm sorry, one at five twenty-six. And the other at five thirty-six, Shaker Boulevard in Enfield. The two parcels are shown on top tax map twenty-three. As lots eight and nine dash two. Parcels are owned by Allison Flint, which I assume is the Allison Melinda Flint Living Trust. So, hi Allison, welcome. It's good, good to see you. Um. As I asked Brian, tell us what you are going to do. as I asked Brian, tell us what you are going to do.
Essentially, nothing. The um, currently, the driveway to five twenty six comes in from Shaker Boulevard and the driveway to five thirty six comes in from Shaker Boulevard, and they actually cross to get to the buildings that they're connected to. Um, this would allow the house and the garage to be back on the same lot again, and the field to simply be a field.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And she did have, like I said, she did have to do some deed work to get them matching.
Yeah.
No questions?
What are the size of each lot?
Um, I think the, the five twenty six lot is one acre.
Yeah.
And then the garage and the field, five thirty six, is the rest, and, and I'm not exactly sure the acreage.
Is it over an acre or?
Yeah.
Hold it up there, you guys can see it here on this map.
You've done this before, so it's, it's this one?
Eight is the house, that's one acre, and nine two is the garage and the rest of the field.
So we can look at, uh, eight. So it's like Shaker Boulevard. One point two three acres, and nine point two is three point, no, two point one. Yeah. You have solar, right?
Uh huh.
Cool. And some more solar?
Not at this time.
Making one.
It's so, the array is so big, I think it's fine.
Nice.
Make a motion that we accept the proposal, because we said it.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions. The ayes have it. Allison, your lots are merged.
Thank you.
So for both of you, on the lot mergers, we'll do what's called the notice of action, which is basically a memo that gives draw up, chairman signs it, you sign it, and then we send it up to the registry for, for recording.
It is.
And that, that's what makes it official, as far as they're concerned, and uh, for you, I think I've got it.
Well, Ryan two does have the, yeah, the
Nope, I, I
Yeah, I know. Strictly on.
Yeah. Okay. Our final hearing.
This one's seconded by, it'd be more problem.
That could be.
Yeah.
Right here. I got it.
Yep.
Oh.
Okay, he's back. Okay, uh, hearing P twenty four dash oh seven dash oh one. Enfield Property Holdings, Brian Degnan has applied for minor site plan review approval to operate a nano brewery and tasting room at fifty nine Main Street. Tax map thirty one, Lot thirty four. Subject parcel is zero point two two acres and is located within the community business zoning district. Property is owned by Enfield Property Holdings. Um, I wish to disclose that Brian and I did have some conversation concerning the wording on his application, which is why there was a second version of the cover letter. And we did not discuss the merits of the proposal, just some of the wording.
Yeah, but I have to go to the ZBA, because things such as bottling are technically light manufacturing. So it became like a two parter instead of one parter. Also, we'd like to have signage on the rail trail as well, like a shingle per se, so you, you know, that helps to require experience. But those two things that will require a trip to the ZBA, however, I was not. It did not get matched at the time.
Well, didn't we remove?
We did. We rem- we removed everything that requires a trip to the ZBA. That was right. That was, that was the
That, that was, that was the idea.
That was the idea.
Because
And then I go to the ZBA, this person first.
Okay, so, uh, we all know it's the old laundromat building, and tell us exactly what's gonna happen.
Okay, so I've been looking for something to do with that building for quite some time. It's a nice residence, it's a, sorry, it's a nice commercial space, it has parking, and so it's a logical thing to have, uh, some sort of business in there. Um, the laundromat wasn't really economically viable with the water rates, by the things, and I looked at a coffee shop, but couldn't find anyone to run it. And, and so, uh, Rob introduced, uh, uh, someone who is interested in having a brew, you know, a brewery. So that is currently a path we're going down. So, so that's it, that's the, that's the plan.
A brewery or a tasting room, will you be brewing?
Yes, and, and tasting.
Oh.
Well, I will have to, and actually, we will, we will bring all, this is, this is, uh, Dan Thomas, who is actually the, the person who knows things about his business, I'm just facilitating. Okay, space.
Yeah.
Um.
Notice there's a typo in the hours of operation. You've got two Sundays.
Ah.
Should be Sunday.
Yeah, I, I actually use this opportunity to fix some of my hasty spellings. Um, yeah, so.
I'm assuming that twelve to eighteen hundred is a Sunday.
I guess it is, if you have a, here's, here's an update.
I was looking at the hours of operation.
Yeah, so it's, that I am, uh, as a, as a, as my education got higher, my abilities, the English language decreased. It's also true for my spelling, if you remember my signature.
Yeah.
So.
I was just looking at, at the hours of operation, and probably, probably on the restaurant across the street, it's similar hours of operation, and what that, and how it's gonna impact the parking problems.
Well, I mean, there's no parking down, we don't have any park regulations downtown.
Right.
And, uh, currently, I do allow the, I fifty, because I'm pro-business, and no one's using it, I let fifty, I told them people could park there during their hours of operation, and that's the lobby parking, and that's good for things, because people have vehicles like an F three fifty, which is basically an aircraft carrier, and you can park it literally no out of the street. So, uh, that is not, so that would not be, like, my concern would primarily be the breweries parking, and they would have to figure out how to deal with that, however, there is ample parking all around downtown now. Uh, there will be a number at Whitney Hall, the number, I, I'm, I'm guessing was forty spaces. Right, and this is a time when people would not be very used, there's parking on Bebo Street, there's parking also down the other direction, I understand that, um
Belfry Church.
Yeah, the, yeah, thank you, that is also owned by the town, so, uh, if, if, if people are aware that there's other parking you know, this is just a matter of like, a website identification, so there, I think there's more than enough parking.
Your picture is on.
I can't get it. No.
I, I have a question. Um, what is the difference between a brewery with a tasting room, a brew pub and a restaurant that serves beer?
Do you mind if I?
Why, why don't you come up to the table?
I've got a cure for you.
Because I, I think a lot of these questions, you're gonna be able to answer, uh, better than Brian.
Sure, so, um, really, it comes down to licensing, uh, the state of New Hampshire has, uh, many different liquor licenses. Uh, the license that we carry is a beverage manufacturer, so as a beverage manufacturer, we're allowed to, uh, produce our, our beer, and then we can have, uh, a retail operation on site, so we can have tasting and we can sell four packs and, and that kind of thing. Um, what's unique about our license is it allows us a second location as well, uh, so our manufacturing location also allows a separate off-site, uh, retail location, so if you guys have looked into our brewery at all, um, seen some of the, the news articles, uh, we are working on a, a project in Bo. Um, but because our license allows two locations, uh, we can kind of, kind of run with it that way.
Now, you have something in Sonopie as well, don't you?
Yeah, we did a pop-up thing for the summer, so, uh, if the building formerly known as the Anchorage, uh, were in there, uh, this summer, or at least goes through October, so, uh, come October, uh yeah.
So what's the name of your brewery?
Optimistic Brewing, so we started in, um, Springfield, just right up the road, uh, right off of, right on Four Corners Road. Um, so right now, that's where we're brewing, um, and then our, the way we're structured right now, our remote location is on Lake Sonopie. Uh, and, and as we change that, we'll be brewing and tasting in Enfield. A size brew house. So right now, we're a five barrel system, so what that means is, um, a barrel is thirty one gallons, so we're brewing a hundred and fifty five gallons of beer per, uh, brew. Right now, we're brewing once per week, um, and that's, that's with our current equipment, that's about is, is, yeah, that's what we're gonna get. Um, we are considering, uh, uh, increasing our capacity. We can do that initially by adding fermenters, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll brew maybe twice a week, um, and then long term, uh we may increase the size of the, the brew house, but I mean, that's, that's up in the air, right now, we're, we're planning on five.
Mm-hmm.
So the, also the building, uh, expansion room for you to accomplish all that?
Correct.
Correct.
The hours of operation that Brian listed in his cover letter, those are the retail hours, I presume?
Correct, and manufacturing would be during normal business hours, so, um, probably not earlier than nine AM and no later than four PM when customers would come in.
Okay. Um, we have a whole list of criteria for site plan review, and I think what we will do is pick out the relevant ones and go through and make sure that all of the keys are crossed and the ayes are dotted. So, five point five is traffic, parking, loading, and safety. Um, because of your location, you have basically no parking requirement. Um, my question would be loading, uh, raw materials in and loading trucks or vans or whatever vehicles you will be exporting to go to your other location. Um, where, wh- which end of the building is that gonna happen on, what time, how big are the trucks, that kind of stuff, can you fill us in?
Sure, so, um, everything that we get brought in is either a small package, you know, UPS, FedEx, or LTL. Um, the LTL that we use currently is, it's all liftgate, so the trucks can come in, uh, right into the parking area, they can drop their liftgate, and, uh we very rarely get more than one pallet at a time, so, uh, our brewery is, is, um, kind of representative of the same size restaurant. So it would be very similar to the deliveries that a restaurant would get, you know, we're, we're not getting frequent deliveries. I don't, I don't think I've ever tracked it, but I would, if I had to guess, I would say we're getting four to six pallets per month. Um, you know, we try to buy in bulk so that we're, uh, our shipping costs are efficient. Um, so we're trying to load up a pallet, you know, as tall as it'll go, so, um, when that pallet arrives, we'll bring it in, uh, we can bring it in, uh, and the doors that are there, um, you know, it, it, I don't anticipate any disruption to the community, um with the size, size, uh, setup we have.
Yeah, that sounds good. Um, blah, 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 those are not, okay, water, well, that's all, water drainage is all pre-existing.
Hang on, if you're, just a dim question about the parking. Um, I think, just looking at the zoning ordinance, Rob, uh, they, they've got no problem at all meeting the minimum requirements, so, yeah. Thank you.
As we indicated earlier, there is a sort of a carve-out for that little section of Main Street between High Street and Oak Grove that we actually don't have any parking requirements, but actually, he's shown, and you've got your little map there, he shows ten spaces that he owns. And so we designated, I think, two spots for handicap in the front, and as Brian alluded to, we do have a lot of public parking, um, just because it's not right in front of the building, it's, it's pretty close, I mean, we can we can, like I said, Whitney Hall, Hughes Park, Lake Center Park.
And also Blacksmith Alley at the town, actually marks it off.
Yep, and there's municipal parking in the, in the rear of this building.
Yeah.
About, uh, was it twelve spaces there? So, it's actually pretty good shape compared to others.
What building?
In the rear of his building.
Yeah, next.
It's a little municipal right across from Kitchen Fifty Six, right on the river, on the rail trail, you know the one I'm talking about?
Well, but it's not his.
Oh, no, actually, part of it is. Municipal, by the way, I said, if you look at, if you look at where, where the map is, because that property looks like
Designed or accident?
Uh, the property looks like Oklahoma, for some reason, and it just made sense to have it all there. Uh, so if you look.
Yeah. Yeah, being on the rail trail, bike parking, are you gonna have bike racks or?
Well, so, so there's a cou- couple things from, uh, my point of view, as a, somebody who owns property, I'm primarily concerned about not getting sued and other compliance, like ADA and things, so as he finds out where the state says it's okay to have his outside seating, right, it's like the state decides that, and then I'm, uh, I'm somebody, uh, who actually walks a lot, I bike, or sorry, drives, I walk and I bike because I find cars be a lifestyle trap in a way, and that's part of the reason I came to Enfield was, uh, I kind of miss actually walking down to the hardware store to get stuff to work at my house. But, uh, yeah, but I was going to, uh, do two things, one, get some decent bike parking, but also I'm going to install one of those bike maintenance things, because ultimately I don't know, I go through a lot of tires on the rail trail, so. Yeah, there's, there's space for it, but.
So the state determines where the seating goes, that's because of the liquor license?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there, there's some yeah, some, some choices, so we tried to, uh, make this encompassing, but still have enough flexibility, so we have to see you as little as possible after the state tells us what we have to do.
I appreciate that.
Um, so exterior lighting and signs, um you, you replaced all the exterior lights after the fire?
Yes, so all the lights were initially, were, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what one calls them, they're like, you know, the nineteen eighties on the side, like going everywhere lights, and, uh, I uh, got those, got these, and I, there's a particular word, the ones that just
Cut offs.
Cut offs.
Thank you, that look
Tax car compliant?
That, yeah, it was, it was nice cut off, um, that, uh, look to be period, so they're like the ones from nineteen oh six except for the fact, instead of them being really high, they're, they're low.
Yeah.
So if you look, the, uh, the cage still comes down, the light bulbs are way up there.
Right.
As part of the aesthetic is the light cage, so if you walk by, you'll be, you'll notice, you'll notice that you see the ca- the cage below because that's how they looked, but the bulb is
They must be LEDs?
Huh?
Are they LEDs?
Uh, I, 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 I don't know, I think so, they're
Your pocketbook would like it if they were.
Uh, I don't, it, well, the thing is, I cared more about the aesthetic and how the lights looked than what they are, I think they are LEDs.
It's not a requirement.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't honestly recall, because of the nature of the lights, they're actually, um, like they're I, I had the light fixtures actually made, uh, like modified at this place in LA, and they're like, well, here's the lights you use. Like, okay, so, that's what we use.
Okay, cool. Um, signage, per sign ordinance, you are allowed the one sign. Uh, the size is dictated by the frontage on Main Street, the frontage of your building not to exceed, I think it's forty square feet. Rob says yes.
Yes.
Um, so we can certainly approve you for that. And you said you're gonna go for variants, so you have a sign on the rail trail side?
Yes.
Okay. Um, when we do the decision board, shall we, um say the second sign is contingent upon receiving the variant, that way he doesn't have
Some conditional approval.
Some conditional approval.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, dimensional guidelines don't count. Water supply. You are going to be on Enfield Town Water.
And sewer.
And sewer.
Um, demand a lot of water? Do you have a lot of water to use?
Yeah, well, I guess that's relative, right? So, yeah, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty five gallons per brew. And then there's a significant amount of cleaning. So typically what, what. We've communicated to other planning boards previously, Bo, for example, is. Per brew, we're probably gonna be using about three hundred gallons of water. So.
It's insignificant.
It's not too much.
Do you, um, are you brewing, the water being used for the actual brewing, you filter it or? Uh, read it anyways?
Yeah, so there's a whole, there's a whole process we go through to condition the water.
Cause I'm not on Town Wa- Water or Sewer, but occasionally like when they have to kick in an, an extra well, a different well. That's normally not used. It's very hard. So that may, you know, affect your brewing. If it's that pump, that top fire well is running while you're. Taking, taking water. Just something to be aware of. We talked to Public Works guy about. All the treatments he does and stuff like that.
Sure.
I'm just something that's, just be aware of.
Yeah, I'm sure that. Filtration. Can get anything out that Enfield Water wants to deliver to you.
Well, I mean, this is really high water, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure that would affect the taste of the beer.
Yeah, that's, that was something to be aware of.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we plan to, uh, probably in the very near future, uh, have some water folks come in, grab a sample and then. Kind of let us know what's in it so we can treat it appropriately.
Yeah. And then, which is on that same line, the waste. I'm assuming is all. I am not home brewer, but it's the yeast and all the other hops and all that stuff. Where does that go?
So we think. We shovel out the large solids, but in, in, you know. As the water gets introduced to the drain, you know, there will be some sediment that. You know, we, we will treat if we have to or, or depending on, on the requirements, you know, we can work through.
Yeah, Public Works guy is also someone to talk to about that.
I, I think Kurt's question, if I can rephrase it, is the large solids that don't go down the drain, what?
We have a large backlist of pig farmers who. Yeah, so currently we have somebody coming to Springfield, uh, I don't know, I think it's about once a week, maybe, maybe a little less often than that. But we put it in a big barrel and he comes and shovels it in his truck and brings it to his farm.
Yeah.
Happy pigs?
Yes. Dog fiscals out of it.
Yep. And I have backup after backup after backup if he doesn't show up.
That's good.
Uh, sewage disposal, I think we've just kind of covered that. You're gonna get with the Public Works Department here and. Make sure that they are happy. Uh, snow removal. Brian, do you wanna talk about how you handle that?
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things that's always interesting is the state likes to put as much snow as they can in that lot. So. Even though it has not been operating, I of course have the equipment, so I get rid of it. And I have a. I have a Kubota with a eight foot snow blower on the front of it. That gives me great joy at forty horsepower. So. Yeah, so, well, and also there are a lot of people who knows how to use this, so it won't be a problem. So there's a couple ways to rid the snow. You can always. Plow it, but if you plow it and it keeps on going, in the past what has happened is I also have a bucket, the same thing. And I've loaded in a trailer and then dumped it. Uh, behind my house. So I, I don't particularly expect it to be a problem, but in the case of the snow blower, I just blow it over the rail trail up on the hill.
Is, is the tractor gonna stay at the brewery?
Uh, so the answer is no, it's actually, uh, well, it spends most of its time up on that Wescott property. Part of the reason that was purchased is, is a five minute drive to downtown.
Okay. That takes care of snow remove. Did you, okay. We got that. ADA compliance. You wanna talk to that, Brian?
Yes, so I, I have a couple, couple things on that. So I have, how I do deal with this is a couple fold. So first of all, I'm very mindful of lawyers. Because I have been, although the building's not operated, there are the patent trolls who's trying to sue you randomly for things. And I have lawyers that doesn't sue them back and solve that problem. So how this is usually solved, because the law is a poorly written law. And it's the perception of the person who's using it, is the word adequate. See, it's gotten. I have Mike Calber, who is in a wheelchair, who is my friend, who comes and tells me what to do. So if Mike says it's okay, it's absolutely okay. Uh, and then I have my lawyers write that up and that how we solve that. So there will be one ADA compliant bathroom. There's a bathroom already in. Back there that was designed with like this area for him. And also as far as the parking, tend to be, I don't know, we put those. Like how the spaces are, the best place to do is have like two spots in the middle where the curb cut is to go up. But this is all. All that just depend on like, we have to figure out what the state wants and everything else. Like, so if the state, for instance, the state says you have to put your. Outside area there, right? So now during the summer, you want to drink your beer outside, cold beer, hot day, right? Uh, it has to be good, you know, we have, we have to have some like arrangements. If that's the case, then we'll have to figure out how to. Change things to, to satisfy this. So a lot of it's just like lawyering.
I, I think, um, given the fact that. The number of parking spaces that you have, per regulation, I think you're only required to have one handicap space.
Yeah, so the dynamic there is it depends on the amount. So there's the parking dynamic combined with the amount of people in the building. There's an equation. And we will have to find out how many Phil Neely says is okay to have in the building. Okay, and then you, I, I'm not completely clear on that. Okay, that is, that is how it was presented to me.
Next is solid waste and recycling.
So. Talk about, yeah, so he plans, as the brewery, you know, he will generate some. Some waste. There will also be some other waste that's very likely produced by people coming in. Uh, I don't have a good handle on that yet. One of the dynamics of this though is regardless of what we do, we just have to hide it. Uh, so if you look at the side of the building where there used to be the. What do you call it? The power meters? It's like, we try to close it up, make it look good, right? I'm kind of a sucker for aesthetics. So we'll do the same thing. With the, the trash bins or wherever they live. It will be in something that looks like.
So you're not gonna need a dumpster?
I don't believe so. Now, at one point I did approach, uh, when I was looking at the cops, I think, if you did need a dumpster, the plan is. Uh, Max said he would rent space behind. Georgie's.
Okay. Something in order to buy an electronic. Something about an electronic for the garbage. I'll be ready for something.
Okay, yeah. Um, so, so the garbage is like a thing to be mindful of, but it's not like a deal killer.
It's gonna be in an enclosed area.
Yes. And enclosed for me is, uh, just by definition means four sides.
Yes.
That's fine, sir.
Four, three in the building.
Yeah, three in the building. Basically, uh, I don't wanna feed the bears anymore than you do. Cause I don't want to clean enough.
Right.
One thing to note is that if you do go across the street, if you find that necessary. The existing dumpsters are kind of grandfathered in, but anything new, you would have to. Observe the setback from the river. Which I believe is seventy five feet. So.
He's probably not gonna have to worry about it, though.
I hope, yeah, I, yeah, I don't think so.
They've got, will work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Worst cases, I've always wanted to buy one of those cute old Japanese Suzuki pink dump trucks. I love that as well. And I can afford them, twenty five years old. They're so cute. They look like little bunnies. Yeah. So.
Okay.
It was not a problem.
I think generally speaking, that. That covers everything that's on our checklist. Um, the outside seating. Is to be determined by the state. And we would want you to. Come back in and let us know exactly what the state has said so that we can. Give our approval, which I don't think would be withheld.
Was that a, that just a conversation with Rob and plus? It's something that.
Whatever the board would like. We can certainly leave it in Rob's hand, or we can certainly ask him to come back.
I think we should leave it with Rob unless there's something surprising from the state.
Yep.
Okay. Linda?
Will you be having food also?
So initially, uh, we'll do prepackaged food. Uh, so like, for example, in Sunapee right now, we have a pizza warmer. Where we have a, a local company stocking it for us. Uh, we have prepackaged popcorn from a local supplier. And we have, uh, uh, warm pretzels from the same place I get the pizza from. Uh, we'll probably do something similar to that. Long term, we have planned, like, we have an idea of maybe working with some local restaurants to do like a ghost kitchen concept. Where, you know, folks could order off of a optimistic specific menu. But it would be made by local restaurants and, and brought in. So, uh, to answer your question, food will be available, but we don't, we will not be preparing any food on site.
Are you required by the state to provide food?
Depending on the license, it changes, uh, my responsibilities. So for example, if I don't have food. Uh, I believe I can serve one pint per person or a four ounce taster per tap.
Yeah.
Uh, with food, uh, it increases that.
Yeah, I've been cut off before. Kurt? Um, while you're brewing, is there any odors or anything like that?
Uh, it's not that would leave the building.
Okay. And still one you're probably aware of, the, your property has an easement. That a town easement to cross it from their parking lots. No, I don't, I don't.
That, it's actually doesn't, it just says an easement.
Yeah, yeah, I know. The language was, it doesn't actually say where or how wide or just that. People are allowed to walk across to the access to rail trail.
Yes.
Is basically what it's.
Yes.
It's probably.
If you look at the map there, you see there's a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of space. Like, there is, this will not be.
Yeah, you just can't fence the whole thing and.
Yeah.
Type of thing. That would be.
Actually says easement, so legally, just so you know, I could fence the whole thing because it's so vague. But I'm not.
With a K.
With a K.
With a K. Okay, with a K.
All right. Any other questions, your comments from board members?
Nope.
Nope.
We have people, well, we did have people that were online and. People, people who are online, uh, if you have any questions or comments about this proposal, now is the time.
When you open.
To be determined.
Okay, I, I don't see anybody jumping in or raising.
So if you're hoping to say something, you have to unmute yourself. And raise your hand.
And raise your hand.
So you know, if you, you, when you get ready to open, if you need to have some trial customer.
So this, this approval, like the first step to, like, basically deciding, putting the investments you really turn to the place, right? So, uh, and a great just. That is gonna happen, uh, a great time to get contractors and to do stuff is always like, you know, November, December, because no one wants to ruin their house for. You know, Thanksgiving and Christmas. So, um, that. I, I, I hope we get on this as soon as possible. But the opening, as far as the, the redoing, the, the opening there is up to this gentleman.
Yeah, ideally, we want, we wanna be open for the summer, right? Like, that's when people like to be open. So, um, you know. Depending on the construction timeline, um, you know, we, we really hope to be open by May first. Kind of figure out if that's an optimistic goal or, or reasonable.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are.
There are some people in the room. I don't know if they want.
Oh, people in the room. Any questions or comments?
Yes. More, more breweries, please.
And town manager put a thumb up. So I guess he's good with it. Let me go through what I have for notes. Um, basically, we're going to approve one sign. And the second one on the rail trail side, if he gets variants from the ZBA. Other than that, I don't see any other conditions that we should be adding. Kurt?
I just look Kurt to me. On the rail trail side. If he puts a sign on the rail trail itself, like the other businesses. You don't need the ZBA, cause it's not, it's on the rail trail property. You just have to work with friends of the rail trail and maybe the state.
There's, I have to get this. There's a great debate about where this, well, property line is, by the way. And so I need to get a survey. I've been trying to get a survey out there, but I don't think they take me seriously. Cause it's like. Uh, so if you use the GPS from the geological survey marker, so there's a maple tree behind the building. It is about a little beyond the maple tree. But that doesn't mean anything. So this is important because I need the state, like, so I need to find out where this is so you can ask the state like where to go and things like that. So this whole thing is going to be triggered by a, a great survey.
Yeah.
Well, if the sign was on the other side of the rail trail, you'd know it was on the rail trails property.
Yeah, oh, oh, I see, I see. Oh, well, that's.
I wonder about putting it on the back of the building.
Well, on the back of the building, there's actually a light there. And what I wanted to do, and I will. Assign everything else. I wanted to have like this, this way, like hanging this far this way, actually had this great little wood router to like make signs. And that's why if you walk back there, there's a little light. And the reason is every year someone comes and takes a printer paper, prints out the thing. Staves it to that post there and it rains once and it's gone. So I figured I'd help them out. Well, uh.
And I'll work with them. They, you know, there's, in our sign ordinance, there are some signs that are allowed that.
Yeah.
Are, I mean, like hours of operation and directional.
Informational signs.
Yeah, yeah. So there are some things that are, it's not just one sign that's allowed. We can, the sign for the business is one sign.
Yeah, right.
There's a bunch of.
There's a bunch of other things. You could also have an informational sign, which is direction only.
Yep.
Hours of.
Has the name and has directions only.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. As long as you don't put a B M R on it and call it a sign. Yeah, like Conways. I don't think anybody has ever come to us for a ZBA approval for a sign on the rail trail.
Right.
In all the years I've been doing this, I, I know the pizza place didn't.
Right.
Yeah. Just if you dig a post hole out there, make sure you're wearing the fiber optic.
Anything else? Board members?
No.
Public. Closed public hearing. Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve. This would be.
If required.
The second sign is required.
If required.
Yeah. I'll second that.
Yeah.
Okay, Mokin made him second. Is there any further discussion?
You wanna read that whiskey, see what you've got?
Uh, well, I have two places. So I have approval of a site plan review with the condition that a second sign receive. ZBA approval if required.
Yeah, that's works.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? You can't vote, Bill.
He's so excited.
I'm sorry.
He wants it on the record that he was in favor of.
Okay, who, who'll accept that? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Say, let the record show that Bill Griffin. Who, who was an alternate is in favor of this proposal. I guess it's a done deal.
And he refuses.
Thank you for coming.
He refuses to not vote.
I would love to.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Have a good vacation.
Cause I'm.
Okay, people. Okay, next item of business.
Yes.
Um, Rob, land use administrators report.
Yeah, I won't, uh, take up too much of your time, but just tell you that, um. There is fair amount of activities. It's summer peak, I'd say, right now in terms of activity on real estate and speculation. Um, Laramie Farms, we did not receive, at least some that we know of, we can ask one, you didn't file an appeal on the Laramie Farms thing with the Superior Court?
I did.
You did? They have not told me.
Well.
You filed an appeal with the ZBA. Did you file an appeal with Superior Court?
I did.
Oh, okay.
But just recently.
Was it timely for the thirty days?
It was timely. It was a day ahead.
Okay.
Morning that it will be on its way to you.
Okay.
Which I think.
Thanks for the heads up.
No, it's not you. I think it goes to Wendy, uh, Huntley.
The, the deadline was last Thursday. So it's a week out. They haven't told me yet, or any of us.
Well, uh, I can't explain any of it.
So, take that back. We've got an appeal for the, uh, Laramie Farms case that will be in Superior Court. So.
You know the other party?
Hmm?
You, you know if the other party also appealed or?
They did not.
Okay.
Yeah, I just.
Does that normally take to throw the Superior Court?
Long time, long time.
Long time. Their docket is, there's been some talk at the state, David, you might be able to help us more. There was some talk about a. Like a rocket docket for land use cases, but I don't know if that was put in the list. Oh, you think so?
I think so because I was told I had to go to, uh, Grafton County. Cause I grew up in Grafton County.
Yep.
However, it's coming out of, uh, Hillsborough County. And I asked this, this morning, um, and said, you know. I was told the Grafton, well, how did this happen? And they said, well, Grafton has backed off doing them. It's, they are more people who are familiar with it here and they're specializing in, in it.
Good, must be the rocket dock they're doing. They've been, Hillsborough's been doing most of the land use cases for the last year, year and a half.
So.
The ZBA is gonna be busy next month. I've got three applications for variances, the ZBA, um. Planning board, I think you'll see some, uh, I know that, uh, just talking to the surveyors, there's. They'll, you, you'll be busy too. I think there'll be at least a few more cases for you guys next month. Um. Let's see what else. Uh, we finished up the project at, uh, Lakeside Park. I don't know if any of it's had a chance to go down there and see all the new plantings. The new parking, granite curbing, it's really pretty. It's, it's very nice. I, I actually spent some time on Sunday down there with my girlfriend. And, uh, we really like it. It's just a few more small odds and ends coming to, to be finished up down there. But, uh, so far, the reviews are really good on that. It's looking really nice. Um. Let's see, does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, that's what I feel more of a general comment, but you might know some info.
Yeah.
I was looking at the real estate webpages and one of them I looked at is the realtor that lists. The, uh, La Croix property behind Shaker Auto, um, that. Property, the section in Enfield is no longer on the realtor's list, but the Canaan side is. Um, two hundred acres, plus or minus. Um, and, uh, using the same description as the Enfield side for what's could go there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't know if any. Just something to be aware of. Cause that's, it, cause it's the older, ninety percent of the access is through Enfield. Yeah, unless you upgrade the classic roads and back of it.
Yes, so, and I have talked to the, the broker that's representing Bob and that, and both persons.
Yeah.
He's, he's asked me numerous occasions, can, can, if we did housing up there, can we pipe, uh?
So, yeah, that's, yeah, that's my.
And I said, that's way above my pay grade. I have to add because it's obviously, we've got, we've got stock in, in Lebanon's treatment plant. And we own capacity there.
Yeah.
Canaan does not.
Right.
But whether or not that could, that could happen, it's gonna be.
Yes, and access, road access also.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're in plastics roads. And up Joy Brook and whether it's real, whether it's really a classics road or discontinued. Off of Lovechips, off of Lovejoy Brook Roads, there is a spur that goes, well, if you're heading. I guess from Enfield to Canaan.
Right.
It'll be on the left. And it comes out onto Maple Street.
May, it comes out on May Street.
Base, base street, base street.
Yeah.
Yeah, I said it was a long way. Wetland areas. I've walked it a number of times. It's. It's, it's, it was used for the logging operations up there.
Yeah.
So.
I just, uh, remember one thing, this will, this will come into you. Hopefully you're available. Uh, the town of Grantham has reached out to us. And, uh, town manager sort of kicked it to, to me and to a volunteer or so. For a perambulation with Grantham. It's been quite a while since we've done it with them.
Yeah.
Uh, they've finished, I actually participated in perambulation with Grantham on Plainfield as a selectman.
Yeah.
That was, that was awesome because we were up at the park at elevation.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's a very, very long line. We had to pay, uh, a corner marker up there. That had been lost since the great fire on top of Grantham Mountain. Wow. And so we had to hire, the two towns hired a forensic surveyor. To help us try to find that. We represented both towns up on the mountain. And we bushwhacked for hours and hours and hours. And we stopped for lunch and. Kind of enjoyed each other's companies, kept looking, couldn't find it. Eventually the Plainfield guy said, well, we've got about an hour. Ride home because we gotta go all the way out of the park in Grantham and we get back to Plainfield.
Yeah.
Uh, and it was funny because we got a call from Grantham's conservation guys and they found it after we had left them. And it was right where we had lunch. We were like sitting on top of the rock. And literally, it's a stone marker that had fallen over in the, in the Great Grantham Fire. And somebody finally was able to see just barely in the moss, the G for Grantham. On the other side, when they set it back up, it's got P for Plainfield. And that's kind of a neat one too, because if you look on the map there, uh, Plainfield took, uh, about thirty percent. Well, actually it was gifted to them.
Yeah.
Of Grantham, just like we got a trunk, there's the boot heel from Grantham. And I think Springfield got a little tiny swish too. Uh, but it was because of the spine of Grantham Mountain, they gave us all the stuff on our side.
Sign me up, Ron.
Yeah, you, you, you guys will wanna do some bushwhacking with us. They've.
Yeah, if I know one.
They've identified it as fairly simple because it's not a lot of ground to cover there.
Yeah.
To Grantham. But, uh, it's constitutionally required that we're supposed to perambulate every seven years. And I think it's been. How long has it been? You probably were on the last perambulation.
Yeah, it's been more than, it's been a while. All of the lines for Enfield have been a while.
And of course, now that we do it, we do it with GPS.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so GPS kind of means you don't really need to go back out there again, just once you, once you hit that monument with GPS. Should still be there when you're back.
Well, yeah, it's, it's a nice way, but you also pick up when things get, you know, which side of the line that things will go to.
Yes.
Too, so.
Yeah, and some people might try to move stuff, so it's good to be back.
Yeah.
Anything new on the possible development? I think planning boards heard a conceptual. Of the possible development out by the, the dam at the end of Crystal Lake.
Oh, yeah. So he came in to see me last week. I had Mr. Kovacs.
Yes.
He had great plans for a big subdivision up there. Last week he was in to see me and he scaled it back. It'll probably be more like a three or four lot subdivision at this point.
Oh, wow.
And I've talked to a few people on, uh, Lock Cave and Crystal Lake, uh, that are like, oh, thank God. They're all worried it's gonna be huge.
Well, I was all for it, but.
Yeah, and it's certainly could use some housing up there.
Yeah.
Uh, the gentleman, uh, he's just, you know, this, it's a, you know, bare width issue. He's kind of scaling it back for practicality purposes.
Yeah.
He's got a son that's kind of picking up his business and is kind of sort of taking over. He's now in a trust. They also own a really awesome lot that is located in, uh, Enfield. It's another one of like, like the Bob La Croix lot, it's off of what's called Lindop Lane, which is another class six that's right in the vicinity of the S A U office. And, uh, it's highly developable sewer water.
Right.
Uh, and so I've, you know, been kind of talking to him about that, whether that's got legs. He's. He, he's kind of indicating to me that it's more likely to be his son to do that one too, but, um. We're also still working on Shed Street. The select board has an, uh, response to the RFP. Uh, from a single, uh, respondent and, uh, they're sort of negotiating now, um. The architect for the applicant or the respondent to the RFP had called me today to talk about some of the things that. I, he thinks that we, or he was asking to try to get some idea of what, what'd be good to have on that site. And obviously, it's gonna be up to our select board to really sort of approve it eventually, but it's a pretty decent proposal that we got. And they're sort of fleshing it out now and we'll see what comes of it, uh, for the future, but. Suffice to say, it's gonna be residential, almost exclusively. Maybe a, maybe a flower garden that's publicly available or a little pocket park or something, but almost exclusively residential, which. Is probably what the select board is most interested in. As we've talked about, it's not probably a great place for commercial. Activity or even mixed use, I don't think. So we'll see, um.
Just to go back a little bit, where was the lot down by the dam?
So you know the Crystal Lake Lodge?
The one still, behind that.
Yeah, he's got a little road cut in there to the left.
Left side of the road, river.
Yep.
It's got what, two hundred acres?
Two hundred acres. So, you know, if it was.
Canyon Town Line.
Yeah, yeah, it's way out to make Mud Pond. There is some wet in the way, way back, but. Minimum per lot. He could have done a lot of lots for sure. It was dry land there for a bunch of lots.
Yeah.
Um, and one time he was talking about making a covenant on the deeds that would exclude anything but log cabins. Loves log cabins, but I don't know if he's gonna continue with that or not. We'll see. So, um.
So from the Moldy Oldies Department, whatever happened to kayak comments?
Yeah, that gentleman, I was gonna reach out and check in with him. He, he had obviously come in and talked to you guys conceptually, telling the select board about seventy-nine E.
Yeah.
Uh, and had some, you know, positive response there. And then when COVID hit, the inflation really started kicking, it kind of backed away. He still owns the big red place in Canaan on Route Four. You're probably familiar with that. Yep.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I should, kind of, I'll ping him, see what he's got to say. That one I thought had, had great potential.
Yeah.
Um, he was talking about twenty-four, I think.
Going down to the river.
Yeah, and that was in the vicinity. You guys know where Connected Car Audio is, where.
Yep.
Bolton meets Route Four.
Yeah.
It was maybe one lot up. It used to be, uh.
Two lots up from.
Can't ones, two lots.
The one that's gonna put Casey Cantor's relatives, I think, uh, maybe an uncle or something that used to own it.
It's an old farmhouse that sits there now.
Yeah.
Um, I haven't heard. I'll, I'll ping him. I'll see what, uh, what he says from him. Yeah.
And, uh, as long as I'm on this old stuff, uh, one time you had mentioned that. A real estate guy representing a certain regional hardware chain is interested?
Yeah, that one by the base wayside, that they were actually interested in the, uh, Stags Warren. Site, which has now received special exception for residential. They're gonna do, uh, a reno on that old house. It's like a ranch house there. Uh, it's a, uh, realtor and her son, uh, from Grantham that bought it and, uh.
Oh, from Bill Warren.
They bought it from Bill Warren, yep.
They needed a special exception. Why?
So it was established as a, um, uh, commercial use.
Commercial use.
Real estate office.
Right.
So the residential use within six hundred feet, as we've talked about the Route Four zoning.
Okay.
To me is kind of a, uh, so, uh, just to be able to have residential use within six hundred feet, you have to have special exception. So they're talking about, uh, they may take advantage of the AD use and have a, like a three unit. You know, housing in two apartments, which would be, which would obviously be a winner there.
Yeah.
Other one that we approved, the old Pan Insurance location.
Yeah.
That's seven units now and it's completely rented and they're doing really well there. That's, uh, Bobby Oaks, Oaks' son. Um, and so he's actually.
Is that Bluebird Apartments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, and they're actually, uh, working hard to try to get with a guy named Dan Plinum. Who owns the old abandoned colonial house, which I, I keep saying is the most developable land in town because it's, it's actually out of the flood zone. On Route Four with frontage, unlike Bob La Croix's land or even some Kovacs where you've got to somehow get up to the land and back.
Right, it's right there.
This is right there. And I've actually seen the conceptual that Dan Plinum had done by an architect. With town homes along the rail trail. It's in commercial in the front, sort of mixed use there, which is kind of target for us in that zone. Uh, would be really nice. They've been having some troubles. Dean Plinum owns it with another guy and they've been sort of deciding who's gonna take it over and how to settle out the. You know, the value of it, what's it worth, those kind of things. And so, uh, but there are some serious. Discussions going on there. I'm actually encouraged by that. And, and you guys know, uh, uh, should have got grabbed to end loose here, but, uh. The two big, uh, projects for the town are, are really, really going hard now. Whitney Hall, uh, we have indications that that place is gonna be ready by no, one November of this year. Which is actually advanced on the timeline. We were thinking next spring. So that's good news. And then you've probably seen the public safety is really going. Good. That, that project has really accelerated. The contractors have done all the frost walls and all the, all the footings and now all the, uh. The concrete foundation is, is ready. Haven't, I don't think they've done slap, a drain inches in and curb cut has started and. And that's been a pretty massive job, as you guys can see. The, the win there too was they worked with Lori Bliss Hill across the. Just across the street essentially at the, uh, pizza place.
Yeah.
Uh, she's taking material. And so the cycle time for our, the ten wheelers for our project is like ninety seconds. You know, they can literally go over, dump and be back.
Yeah, is she planning something on the side there?
She is. I've been down to see her, um, nothing, nothing concrete yet. She's got ideas for a future. We actually had taken the brewer down to see her as one of three or four locations. We, we took them, uh, on the tour. And Lori said, we, we'll build a suit there, but they really felt, they fell in love with Brian's site. Because it's really ready to go. I mean, it's, it's, uh, I would think that once they start actually getting in there, doing outfit, they could literally be open in just a few months. Whereas Lori's is probably a year or two out to getting everything settled. Yeah.
So let's see, um, any talk of when the public safety building is completed and they, everybody moves in?
Yep.
What happens with the fire station and the ambulance?
And the police.
Building.
And the police station. A little bit of consideration so far. It's likely, if I'm, if I'm betting, I'm gonna say that we retain. What, what was the police station? Cause it's right next to.
Right, yeah, that would increase, yeah.
It's sort of on the same lot as essentially what you think about. There's been some talk about that becoming a, some kind of rec facility after.
Or just office space that of some sort.
Office space, like we just expanded our office space, so we don't.
Do we really need more town space?
Town's growing.
Although again, that's one of those ones, if the town is shrinking, it's not growing. The town is shrinking, to be clear.
Uh, I think Union Street Fire Station will definitely probably get liquidated. That's, uh, that's an old s- space and probably is good for housing there.
Twenty thou.
Yeah. I think the, I think the, uh, Depot Street.
Should go back to the state. They own the land.
Is, yeah, we own the building, they own the land underneath it. That could be maybe a couple of apartments, um, museum, I don't know, whatever, whatever. I don't know. It's kind of a noodle. I think that one gets unloaded as well. I don't think we keep that one. But I think if, of those three, though.
It has six feet of water in the spring.
Oh, yeah.
Smells like crap because all the water comes off the rail trail, goes right down into the basin.
It's very damp inside of that building.
Yep.
So.
That's about it for me. Uh, anything else for Rob?
Nope.
Oh, well, the. Let's do our minutes. Uh, I'm sorry.
The, the monthly, uh, uh. Uh, building.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Probably, new guy probably hasn't had a chance to.
Yeah, I'll make sure to, the, the next meeting, you'll have a full update on building permits. He's been busy. Um, ob- obviously, he's, he's kind of very tied up with the, uh, big capital projects, the, you know, the inspections at. Whitney Hall and, uh, public safety and obviously the Salem Club, that's a, that's a huge one. D W is still working there. So there's a fair amount of building going on in town.
And I'll add the brewery to his list of things that he has to.
He's excited about that as, as we are.
Yep, which is good.
He's working, he's working out good. He seems to be settled in.
Safety inspection, taste the beer, make sure it's safe, safe to drink.
Okay. Um, minutes.
Everybody have copies of minutes? You need anything?
Yeah.
One minute.
I had uh one question, wash, clarification. Uh, line one forty-six, is it twenty feet or twenty inches? I don't remember it being twenty feet larger. I thought it was just a little larger. That, that shift.
Which shift, I'm sorry?
Line one twenty-fifth.
One four six.
Oh, I'll say twenty-six.
Um, did they grant the variance for repair of retaining wall on the floor? They granted a variance for a storage shed garage on Jones Hill Road. That would replace a previous structure and expanded by twenty feet. Was it feet?
Yeah, I don't think it was. I think it was uh just a few feet. It wasn't, it was twenty inches.
Twenty percent, just a little bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the only thing I saw.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on the minutes?
I made the motion, we approve the minutes with the one possible exception that Whitney will look at.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in figures say aye. Opposed, abstentions. Minutes are. Accepted, pending research on that twenty feet or twenty inches. Figure. Which Whitney will do and correct if necessary. We accomplished a lot tonight. We have a brewery.
Well, they'd be able to, he's got some work to do, but.
Yeah, we will.
Anyone know what kind of beer he made?
He.
It's very good beer.
It's very good.
He comes up with a lot, a lot, a lot of different flavors.
He's won several awards already for his, for his different beers.
About two years ago, I think he won New Hampshire's Best Brewery. Yeah.
Oh, he's really good at making beer.
Is it called The Brewer?
It's called Optimistic. They used to be in Springfield on Four Corners Road. And he, he had his brewery in the barn. And they were open kind of weekends and we could just go there and hang out. They had picnic tables and.
You'd see all the, all the cars parked on the side of the road.
They used to be open Friday night, Saturday and then a little bit on Sunday and they finally stopped doing Friday night because there was someone out of beer for the rest of the weekend. It's good for all that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, last I heard um for their proposal in Bow. Was that they do not meet the frontage requirement. And I have no idea if, you know, they're gonna get variance or what, but I'm real glad that we have. Have them here now. Cause I think it's.
Great use of that.
It'll be a, a good use for the building. Um, it's, I think it's gonna spur. Some good activity in the. Downtown Main Street area. And um.
Yeah, and actually Jim Keller was in the C V today and the apartments that he's building along the street are getting really close.
Yes.
They, they.
They look nice.
I, I really liked the choice of color for the exterior. It just makes it kind of fade into the trees.
Nice show.
It, they were, they were kind of old fashioned colors.
Yeah.
The only thing that isn't quite right to my eye is what looks like bathroom tile by the beach door. The, it, it just. I don't know. I think it should have been something else. I don't know what, but I just thought. It looks nice and clean, but part of it looks so old, like it's been there all along.
Yeah.
And then that tile is so. Recent.
I, I think they go to, did a good job of making it fit into the neighborhood visually. So.
Motion for adjournment?
Hang on. Motion made.
Are we gonna rewrite the zoning ordinance or not?
Say again, please.
Are, are we gonna be rewriting the zoning ordinance?
I think we're gonna be bringing something in March. I don't think it's gonna be the whole package.
Well, we had supposedly some meetings last week. Could we at least talk about what sort of feedback? Did, did those meetings happen?
They did. Rob, can you kind of summarize what all of us said?
So this was the result of, uh, so I had three meetings. One was a group of three and then two single one-on-ones. One was. Uh, Tim and one was Kurt. The group of three was uh David, Bill and Brett. David, Bill and Brad, this were, these were uh. The, the sort of charge coming out of the last meeting was to try to come up with some, I always call them base hits. You remember?
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna be able to hit a home run with a huge big change personally. I mean, you guys tell me what you want. We, yeah, we, yeah, we've talked about that. The more you put in, the more people, the more people are against individual things. So there was talk about several things that we think might be, might have some legs. Number one up here was the ADU size, allowing at least one of them. This was similar to what the state had proposed, I think.
Yeah.
At least one of the uh ADUs, cause we allow two, having one of them be a little bit bigger. Which I thought was a good idea. I think you guys generally supported that as well. And I think you and the two of you. We talked about the general, generational housing R five. That was discussed a little bit tonight. I don't know. I mean, I was with you. I thought it was single.
I, I thought, I thought it was single owner too.
Yep.
But we probably need to talk about that and finalize that.
Yeah. But I think, I mean, it came out tonight. Either you do the, the back lot, the funky back lot thing or this. You don't need to do both, I don't think. You don't have to do either. Exactly, right. But if the goal is to make more housing, you could certainly make more housing with either of those two things.
Right.
Uh, so that was one. Uh, we talked about in the group of three, uh, reducing parking requirements. Not necessarily for residential, but I think for commercial. Is, you know, that's sort of the trend, I think nationally, is instead of having minimum parking standards, having maximum. And you just look at West Levin and it's, you know, example A, why, too much parking is, I think a waste. And that was a mistake too. They put all the businesses way in the back, parking in the front. They shouldn't have put the businesses here, like the parking in the back. And made it a little more of a village feel to it or whatever. Uh, we talked about it tonight. The conditional use thing seems to get some broad support amongst you guys. I like it.
I think it, I, I think we like it. I think it might be tough to get passed with the voters.
You think so?
Cause it gives, it gives the planning board more, more authority and power and, and without. The average person knowing the details, they might, whoa, no, we don't wanna do that. That's my concern.
Yeah, especially that they can't vote us out. You know, but the Select Board, I guess could.
Yeah, Select Board could, right.
But there's, the voter control is, is less for, for the planning board.
Yeah, but they keep voting in the Z B A members.
Yeah, well, the Z B A is, yeah, but they, they're at least subject.
There's a lot of anger with the Z B A at the moment, but.
Right.
When was the last time you had a Z B A candidate state what his philosophy was?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Before he got elected.
There was also some discussion about, uh, and that was in the, some of this documentation we'll put. Uh, triplex, fourplex. I, and I, I think you, you, you're not on board with that. I like uh allowing duplex in, in the R five. Five acres. You can't have a second unit on five acres. That seems to me, again, if our goal is more housing, there's more housing. And it's really, you could drive by a duplex and not know it's duplex. And of course, Enfield has history. We got duplexes all around. I mean, there's duplexes, the millhouses and all that kind of stuff.
I think a duplex in the R three, R five would fly if it's, if it's in a single structure.
Yep.
It's just two families living in this, all you see is one structure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the definition of.
So that's to be clear that it's, that's what it means. It's one structure, not.
Right.
We did that now, don't we?
No, no, three or five, no, it's a whole family, single family. Uh, fourplex, I think would be too much.
Yeah.
Look at, look at the Anderson Hill, look at the Anderson Hill condos. Those are, that's a fourplex. There's two fourplexes up there. Yeah, but that's, I mean, it's just where it would be going. When you're getting to the outskirts, I think. If you told them. Live there. On an R five. Yeah, if you told them on an R five, it has, to order, put a fourplex in, you have to be three hundred feet from the road.
Right.
And it'd be okay.
Um, I think you'll get pushed back on that. Maybe. Yeah. Their individual, that's what I mean, their individual articles. So if you get knocked out, you're not gonna put it in as one individual. Bill and I drove around the other day, just driving through the districts and uh. We went up Anderson Hill Road.
Yeah.
Hadn't been up there in a long time.
Oh, yeah.
I'd forgotten the condos were there and I didn't even see them.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Right. You don't see it, especially the back one. Cause the back one's probably four hundred fifty feet from Anderson Hill Road. Well, it, but to summarize this a little bit is, are we coming around to saying maybe realistically? We're just gonna stick with the existing ordinance. We're gonna tuck a few things in here and there.
Essentially, that's all that we think can be done.
Um. Till you get the new map approved. What new map? The one we decide on.
Or the, whatever we're calling it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not really, I mean, if we're gonna just use the existing zoning ordinance, existing districts and boundaries. And we're gonna tuck a few things like this in there, we're not gonna have a new map.
That's what, that's what we're saying is we, we don't have a new map yet.
Why would we want a new map?
Because eventually we wanna have things like. A Lake Shore District. We wanna expand the Conservation District as we had discussed. But it never made it onto the map. And we wanna talk about the idea of. Mixed use. Village residential, whatever, you know, whatever they.
Are we saying that we don't have enough time between now and I guess the end of the year, right? Cause you have to have a public hearing. We, we don't have enough time to get enough public input to. Suggest, implement, try to get the town to vote for whatever we're calling the village.
New map.
New map, well, for that zone.
Well, it, it all depends on how quickly we as a board can come to a consensus as to. What goes on in those districts and what the boundaries are. And I don't. I don't see where we're really at a point where we're in agreement.
Yeah, we don't seem to be, seem to be aligned completely.
We got a lot of concepts out there, but non-law definition about.
Yeah, you know, we floated a lot of ideas and we've got to look at them all again or. Look at some of them again and decide which, if any, are what we wanna recommend to the town.
And, and a lot of our meetings have not been able to be used to just talk about these zoning ideas because we've been hearing some other priorities.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, if, if we. Stick strictly to our first meeting of the month. August, September and October. We have three meetings.
Not enough time.
Let's, let's add November too, because.
Because the big thing is that we, we've got to be ready and then we've got to have public input sessions.
Yeah.
Right? Probably more than one and.
You can have those though.
We, no matter what.
After the public hearing. Cause you gotta do the public hearing in January. You can sell it. You then have to sell it in February. Well, you, you could do that, Dan. I think if, if all we're talking about is taking the existing ordinance and peppering it with a few little modifications. No new map, no new, no new anything. Um, just stuff like this.
Yeah.
Alter a couple of articles, you know, that sort of thing. That's what's gonna go for the town meeting. Concurrently with that, the rewrite, as you say, those hearings could happen anytime. Work that would be perfected in twenty twenty-five, well after town meeting.
Yeah, right, right.
And I think, I think realistically, that's probably where we're at now.
Yeah.
Right, cause otherwise, we're going to need to meet several Saturdays to hammer.
That's not happening.
Yeah.
And.
Get paid enough.
Hey.
Well, somehow.
I'm a legislator.
Somehow we've got to do this.
Yeah.
And, and. We didn't accomplish it this year. So next year, it's gotta be different. We're not gonna, we're not gonna have anything.
I think that we've got to be firm on one of the two meetings each month is rewrite.
Yeah. And. You know, the last six or eight months, our work session meeting, we've had. Resilience coming to some of them and.
Heritage Commission took up one.
Yeah. So, yeah, we gotta. We gotta be stricter in what we schedule. Um. Well, we get, you know, we get as far as we get. Uh.
Even these. Small little peppered in. Changes. It's gonna require a small group, I keep saying this, I'm gonna keep saying this, that. You have to have a small group meet to focus on that and come up with some draft language. We cannot do that in a meeting. We send that stuff out ahead of time. Folks need to read it, think about it, and then come to the meeting.
At the base, right?
Yeah, I, I take your point. Um. You know, maybe we divide us up into groups of two and everybody takes one, one of the five things.
Yeah. As Secretary, I'd be happy to coalesce the, whatever the work products are, these groups into a, into the document.
Well. Good. I think first we need to. Get people to volunteer for which, which of those five things they wanna work on. And would you be willing to coordinate that?
Well, certainly. Sticking my foot out about that for a long time.
I'll volunteer for number one. I'll do the generational housing with the Rob.
Well, let's define that a little bit. So, so basically the A D U. Sections in our existing zoning orders. There may be some other wordings in there besides just the size that need adjusting.
I'll take that one on.
So A D U is a topic.
Yeah.
Uh, generational housing, that's really.
So that's, it's really our generational. It's second, it's second home.
Right.
Second home on single lot.
Exactly.
In the rural districts.
Right.
Right.
In, in R five, not R three.
You might even talk about R three.
I don't think so on R three.
There might be a lot of lots that are in the R three district that have more than three acres though.
Right, you know, between three and five at that point.
I mean, I, you know, I have.
So if you're in R three and you, but you've got five or six acres, but you're in R three, you could, you could potentially do that.
You might be able to do that.
Okay.
Right. Cause you can't subdivide it because it's not big enough to subdivide it to two, three acre lots.
Or even if it was and you didn't wanna subdivide, you could.
Right, you could still do that.
Yeah.
Well, so those are some ideas. The parking, that's certainly a separate.
Yeah.
Into the, I actually drafted new parking regulations. You probably forgot, two years ago, we decided we. Didn't have time at that point to really consider them. So I can dig that stuff out and toss it out there to chew on.
Um, I'll take the conditional use. Um, I'll take the conditional use.
Well, I'll take number five then.
That are, that are, that five and two, you're kinda, can't really separate.
They're pretty close together.
Yeah.
It's really four areas, right?
Want to do two and five, Brad?
Sure.
We'll do two and five.
Okay. Now, what are we gonna do? Said we're gonna do these.
I'm gonna take the A D U section in the current ordinance, and I'm gonna write a new section. Okay, that includes that.
Sounds to me like we're gonna have a whole new section, cause there is one there now. That we're gonna add to the I five. And maybe the I three.
Yep. Somebody wanna work on parking, was it?
Sounds like we've done most of the work already.
Well. I'm, I'm not sure. It's been a long time since I looked at whatever. I've learned a lot since.
I, I. I don't want anything about parking anymore.
Yeah, that was basically.
And we're also gonna take care of that under conditional use.
That's the one that's gonna be the tough one. I think I, I agree with that.
Now, that conditional use. You.
Mm-hmm.
What I've noticed in the eleven zoning ordinance is there, there is a procedure for the conditional use. It's more general in nature. And then when you get to the, the district discuss, uh, the regulations for the particular districts, then it shows you what items you can additionally put.
Mm-hmm.
Where it's written kinda here, I don't think it's gonna quite work, but I don't think that's what they're hitting.
No, but that's, that's a starting point.
Yep.
And, you know, I I can look at some other ordinances and see what they have for C U's and.
My, my feeling on conditional uses, it's a project that you really wanna see happen. But it doesn't fit.
Right.
It doesn't fit into the zoning ordinances as they're written.
Right.
And it's not a, we're gonna use this in place of special exceptions. We're not gonna use this as a means to get around the zoning board. It's just, it's a project that looks like it, I mean, it could be the project like Shetstone.
Mm-hmm.
Which doesn't need anything that anybody's ever thought, heard of, but if it's a good project, you may wanna do a conditional use sign.
So one other question, um, and this is for Rob.
Yeah.
Sorry. The Route Four District, the current land use regulations there is, are they hindering people doing what they wanna do?
Absolutely, absolutely. Look at the dollar store. Look at the traffic light gates. Yeah, I just, I mean, I think it was a good idea, conceptual side of things, but it practiced through.
It's not, it's not, it's not easy just to simplify that. The word, you know, that's a whole nother topic that takes weeks of discussion.
Yeah, I mean, you could say. Goes back to, uh, C B.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's easy.
C B is, me is one of my favorite districts in the town, but, uh, you know, that's, that's what it used to be, right? Pretty easy. Yeah, it's just move all.
Exactly.
How long ago was that done?
Then eight, nine.
A year or so after the sewer line was built.
Yeah, so it's probably eight hundred years now.
Yeah, so.
Over here and, and you also feel that it really didn't meet what it. Didn't do what it was supposed to do, but nothing on that, nothing with that sewer extension did what it was supposed to do.
Right.
Go in, you've got the car wash and the dollar store.
Yeah.
Those are the only two buildings.
And they would have gone in anyways.
Well, you're gonna take, you're gonna take a long view of this stuff.
Right.
You really did, good.
I know.
That'll manifest itself.
Yeah, but.
Significantly.